Good evening, this is the December 8, 2015, regular meeting of the Bernards Township Planning Board. I'm just going to make an announcement before we proceed with the formal agenda. As I started to explain a few moments ago, we are now at maximum occupancy of this room. There are still people waiting to attend the hearing in person here at Municipal Hall, and the ante-room, the auxiliary room, is also now at fire capacity, and we still have quite a few. I can't estimate the exact number, but suffice it to say, it's a lot of people that came down tonight to Town Hall to try to attend live. So what we are going to be doing is starting the meeting, or starting through the agenda, the preliminary matters. After we get through those preliminary matters, we are going to take a recess so that the people who cannot attend the meeting live, either in this room or the other room, have an opportunity to get home or to some other location where they can view the proceedings concerning the application in its entirety, whether that's on Cablevision, or FiOS, or the live Internet feed that's being provided through the township website. So with that said, please rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
In accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law of 1975, notice of this meeting of the Planning Board of the Township of Bernards was posted on the bulletin board in the reception hall of the municipal building Collier Lane, Basking Ridge, New Jersey, was sent to the Burnerville News, Burnerville, New Jersey, to the Courier News, Bridgewater, New Jersey, on January 12, 2015, and was electronically mailed to all those people who have requested individual notice. The following procedure has been adopted by the Bernards Township Planning Board. There will be no new cases heard after 10:00 PM, and no new witnesses or testimony will be heard after 10:30 PM. Ms. Florio, roll call, please.
Ms. Alper.
Here.
Mr. Carlucci.
Here.
Ms. Kleiner.
Here.
Mr. Malley.
Here.
Ms. Pavlini.
Here.
Ms. Pedici.
Here.
Mr. Santoro.
Here.
Ms. Axe told us in advance that she would not be here. Mr. Harris?
Yeah.
Mr. Plaza?
Here. Do we need a motion on Axe if she is formally recused from the application?
Just make a motion.
Okay, can we have a motion?
Can I make a motion that we excuse Ms. Axe from the meeting?
Thank you, Ms. Pavlini.
I'll second.
Okay, second for Ms. Pedici. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seeing no opposition, that motion's carried. The minutes will reflect the absence as excused. Next item on the agenda is the approval of charges against escrow accounts. We're considering this evening those of David Schly, November 2015, and EKA Associates, November 1 through 15, 2015. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the charges for both David Schly and EKA Associates as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Santoro. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Kleiner. Any discussion on that motion? Okay, seeing none, Ms. Florio, roll call, please.
Ms. Alper.
Yes.
Mr. Carlucci.
Yes.
Ms. Kleiner.
Yes.
Mr. Malley.
Yes.
Ms. Pavlini.
Yes.
Ms. Pedici.
Yes.
Mr. Santoro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Plaza.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda was to be approval of resolutions in two matters, that being Finley Real Estate LLC, PB 15001, and 131 Morris Town Road Investors LLC, PB 15-012. Both of those resolutions are off the agenda for this evening and will be rescheduled. Okay, at this point, are there board members who will be leaving us? Mr. Carlucci?
Yes.
Mayor Malley. And Mr. Harris. Thank you, gentlemen. Have a good evening.
All right.
And at this point in the agenda, we are going to take a recess for the reasons I've already given. You want to consider carefully before you leave the room during the recess, as you will have to go through the same security checkpoint getting back in, and I'm not sure how they're running that line, so just before, warned on that, we're in recess.
Okay, everyone, we're on the record. We're back on the record. Next item on the agenda is the Islamic Society of Basking Ridge, Inc., PB 12-001, Block 9301, Lot 2, 124 Church Street. Deliberation and vote on application for preliminary and final site plan approval. Good evening, Mr. Raymar, your appearance, please.
Robert S. Raymar, a member of Howard Littman and Goldstein. The applicant.
Mr. Simon, your appearance, please.
Sure, Rob Simon from Harold Law, attorney for Bernards Township Citizens for Responsible Development.
Okay, good evening, council, good evening, all members of the public. As the agenda item indicates, tonight we are in the phase of the application, which is the deliberation and vote on the application for preliminary and final site plan approval. As we are in that phase of the application, no member of the public, or anyone for that matter, will be acknowledged tonight or be given an opportunity to participate. The Board, over the last three and a half years, has conducted multiple, multiple meetings in which it's been presented with a series of presentations of evidence in the form of documents and testimony, both expert and factual, as well as the public comment and presentation of cases by certain members of the public and the objector through its counsel. So tonight is the opportunity for the Board to deliberate, to give its insights. Each member will be giving its deliberative comments based on the application. It's the opportunity for the public to hear those perspectives and positions of each of the Board members. Following that presentation, the matter will be ripe for disposition by a motion being made and seconded. Depending on how it goes and depending what Board member decides to take action in that regard, the motion will be one either for, to be in favor of the application, or to grant the application, or to deny the application. The Board members have not had any prior opportunity to discuss this application or any of its evidence with each other. The deliberation in the form that's going to take place tonight is the first opportunity for each of the Board members to understand what the other Board members are thinking and what their positions are concerning the application. So that is the purpose of this evening's meeting. So with that, I'm going to call on Board members to provide us with their deliberative comments, and is there anyone that would like to go first? Ms. Pavlini?
I will, Mr. Plaza. Good evening, thank you all for attending. I know it's been a process to get to this point. Understanding, though, it's crucial the applicant be permitted to present their case that they deem appropriate. The objectors are able to offer their comments and concerns and witness testimony, and most importantly, the public be heard on the application, allowing suggestions to be addressed by the applicant and/or professionals. The Planning Board must apply the law, weigh the testimony, and come to determination on the information presented to them. I want to thank the applicant and the applicant's professionals for the collegial manner in which they have participated throughout these proceedings, and their efforts to address the many concerns that have been raised. I want to thank Chairman Plaza and Vice Chairperson, Chairwoman, Alper. Yes, I'm addressing you by your elected capacity on the Board. You both have done an extraordinary job of navigating with compliance and leading the Planning Board through this application. You make me and the Planning Board proud to have two extremely intelligent, measured, and dedicated leaders take initiative and guide the Board through this application and others we address. Thanks to our professionals, David Schly, the Planning Board, the Township Planner, David Vanish, Planning Board Planner, and Tom Quinn, the Planning Board Engineer. You've provided us incredible insight, offered us improved recommendations, pointed out the obvious and the not-so-obvious, given us a land use and engineering framework to explore the best options available for the Planning Board to make the best possible determination, given each situation. Attorney Drell, you stepped in to this application in a very difficult time after the sudden loss of your esteemed partner, colleague, and friend Stuart Koenig. Not an easy position, considering all the ketchup you had to do, not only on this, but as well as other applications and other municipalities and interests Mr. Koenig represented. You made the transition seamless and have provided expert counsel when needed. Thank you. To the public, thank you. You have been courteous and polite, to say the least. I personally understand the difficulty, especially in an application that has extended over three years. I admire tenacity. I appreciate your willingness to attend, to speak, and present at these meetings. We were fortunate to have considerable public participation and input, considering not all residents are familiar and comfortable in this arena dictated by land use regulations, statutory requirements, and ordinance. It is unfamiliar to most until they are thrust into it, and I thank you for your continued interest, your efforts, and studies. You've made some very valid points for our consideration. Tonight, the applicant is requesting primary and final plan approval, site plan approval. The plans provided do not contain sufficient details, specifications as required by NJSA 40:55D-50A, but are sufficient, in my opinion, for preliminary approval because NJSA 4055D-46A allows plans and engineering documents to be submitted for tentative, and I quote, "tentative form for discussion purposes." The issue of screening, Planning Board Ordinance 21-281 says, "Where required elsewhere in the chapter, visual screen shall be provided throughout landscaping or other means as approved by the Board. As to provide a solid barrier obstructing the view of the area to be screened on a year-round basis, all screens shall be shown on the landscaping plan." And I continue with 21-28.2C, which reads, "The buffers. Buffer shall be required on all lots zoned other than residential or used for non-residential purposes, where the lot or lots about a residential zoned lot or lots. All buffers shall be shown on the landscape plan unless otherwise provided in this chapter. All buffers should be designed and constructed in accordance with the following. A, all buffer shall be a minimum of 50 feet in width. B, no construction shall occur within any buffer area except for the following, if," and I emphasize, "specifically approved by the Board. Number one, drainage improvements." I looked in the dictionary to find improvement. It's an act of improving, something in addition to or an alteration. Or three, a building alteration, a structure without changing its function, or four, adding a value. C, no removal of existing vegetation shall occur in any buffer unless the removal is in conjunction with construction of or selective thinning of trees, as, and I emphasize, approved by the Board. There are health and safety concerns that need to be addressed regarding internal traffic. I will reference later testimony about the condition to handle the drop-off and pickup traffic on Sunday. Fire safety must be met. Bernards Township Ordinance 21-46A1E1 reads, "Means of access for fire department apparatus shall be constructed in accordance with NJAC 5:21-4. The National Fire Code's Protection Association standards will apply where the following is not specific. Number one, means of access for fire department apparatus shall consist of fire lanes, private streets, parking lanes, or a combination thereof." Which defers to NJAC 5:21-4. 5.4, fire lanes, which are indicated, and fire lanes in number two says, "Must be," fire lanes with two-way traffic must be a minimum of 24 feet in width. Table 5.3.1, Parking Lot Stalls Dimension 18.5 Feet For 90% Parking, 90% Angled Parking, Must Have A Minimum Isle Width For Two-Way Traffic Of 26 Feet. However, in addition to the conditions that the applicant's representatives agreed upon on the record during the hearing, I could not grant preliminary approval without the imposition of additional conditions. One, the detention basin shall be relocated, if not entirely out of the 50-foot buffer, substantially out of the 50-foot buffer, as for to allow an increase in the amount of landscape screening and to allow the fence to remain, but to be moved, the fence to remain, but to be moved towards the applicant's property and away from the existing trees. Two, the drive aisles around the building and between the parking stalls shall be increased to the width of 24 feet around the building and 26 feet between the parking stalls where there's 90-degree angle parking. In order to accomplish relocation of the detention basin, a number of parking spaces will have to be decreased, which I have envisioned and could be accomplished by reducing the number of spaces from 107 to 83 on the basis of the following. The Board on June 4, 2013, voted to establish 107 parking spaces. The requirement was based on 150 being the maximum occupancy of the building divided by a factor of 1.4, as testified by the objector's traffic engineer, Mr. Litworna. 150 divided by 1.4 equals 107. I believe that was a mistake, however, and the mistake should be corrected and not perpetuated. The applicant agreed on June 4, 2013, at the hearing, to limit the occupancy to 142, and its traffic expert, Mr. Nye, testified to a more conservative parking factor of 1.35. 142 divided by 1.35 equals 105. The difference of 107 and 105 is only two spaces, not really a big deal, but the point is to make sure this mistake gets corrected. Now, the real issue in my mind is I believe the condition should be imposed on the grant of preliminary site plan approval, which limits the maximum occupancy of the building to 112. That was based on the applicant's testimony and the prayer mat exhibit, which was what the prayer area holds, a maximum of 112 prayer mats, and that high holiday services would not be conducted on this property, and the applicant would need a multipurpose room that could fit an additional 30 prayer mats. Thus using the 112 as the maximum occupancy, dividing it by the conservative 1.35 factor equals a total number of parking spaces of 83. I can envision the site plan with the elimination of 24 parking spaces primarily, if exclusively along the eastern property line, which would not only reduce the impervious coverage of the site, which would reduce the size of the required detention basin, but would also allow for a substantial reduction of the detention basin to the west, away from the easternly property line. Also allow for a shifting of the building to allow all the drive aisles around the building to be 24 feet wide, and all drive aisles adjacent to the 90-degree parking spaces to be 26 feet wide. So in addition to the above two conditions, I feel it's necessary to find requirements necessary for preliminary approval that have been met. The following additional conditions would also be imposed on the grant of preliminary site plan approval, and I believe that the applicant has agreed to all of these conditions. The purpose of the below list are the conditions. Bless you. One, the site plan is the 14-page preliminary and final site plan dated September 19, 2014, as modified by A, Sheet C03-03, dated December 8, 2014, and B, Fire Service Plan EX, dated January 22, 2015. The current stormwater management report is the version last dated and revised October 8, 2014. The current stormwater management facility operation and maintenance manual is version last revised October 28, 2013. The current architectural drawings are Sheet A01 and A-02, as revised on December 5, 2014, and Sheets A-03 and A-04, last revised on December 20, 2013. The compliance with professionals' review letters and comments. A-1, EKA Associates, Thomas Quinn, Review Letter dated September 30, 2014. Applicant agreed to comply with the following comments stated in the letter. Site Plan Development C03-03. The parking, eastern parking feature section of the flush curb equivalent to the width of a parking stall. This is meant to direct the discharge stormwater from the eastern portion of the parking lot into detention basin number two. The applicant's engineer should indicate if the flush portion could be narrowed by, narrowed to 5 plus or minus, 5 inches plus or minus, in order to provide some wheel-stop protection in those parking stalls. The above comment was superseded by changes reflected on Sheet C03, dated December 8, 2014. On the grading plan, C-04, it appears that the storm drainage pipes entering and exiting basin two do not feature sufficient coverage as designed. These pipes should be redesigned and be aligned perpendicular to the basin slope in order to utilize the flared end proposed and to achieve the sufficient coverage. I recommend altering the spot grades along the eastern swale in order to conform more closely to the existing terrain in this vicinity. Mr. Quinn can provide markup and help with the application in this regard. The Utility Plan, C-05. The basin now features a concrete low-flow channel meant to keep level portions of the basin bottom from staying wet. The low-flow concrete channels proposed for the bottom of the basin should be designed with a minimum of 0.5% slope. The alignment of the 21-inch outlet pipe in the basin number two appears to be incorrect and should be revised. It's possible that 21-inch piping is no longer commercially manufactured, and the applicant's engineer might want to consider using a standardized piping. Several text labels are not legible and should be revised. The listed rim elevation for the manhole downstream in the outlet control structure appears to be an error. The correct elevation appears to be 256.40, according to the location on the grading plan. Construction details on C-08 to C-11. Details of the outlet control structure are not clear. With regard to the proposed bypass for the water quality device, applicant's engineer should consider a separate wear within the outlet control structure. The 3-inch wear and the 8-inch HDPE outlet pipe in the plan view of the outlet control structure are inconsistent with the other details of the plan and should be revised. The specific model of the jellyfish device that is noted in the detail, the original model from the 2013 report was JF42-1. The unit will require hatch doors to conform to the minimum vertical clearance requirements as noted in the detail. The details should be updated to show the new configuration associated with the new hatch doors. The stormwater management report. The length of the spillway in basin one has been reduced significantly from previous basin layout. Calculations should include confirmation that the 1-inch of the freeboard is provided, and the basin number one in the emergency spillway flowing full at capacity will allow the maximum velocity from the spillway under such conditions, and it is not exceeded. EKA Associate, Thomas Quinn, Review Letter dated September 28, 2015. Applicant agreed to the following conditions as a result of comments 1, 2, 7, 8, A, 9, and 10 stated in the letter. Unless further onsite soil testing is performed by the applicant in strict accordance with Appendix E of the BMP Manual, the county soil survey designation of the property will be utilized, which will require the drainage designed to incorporate groundwater recharge. The existing drainage area boundary, as well as the proposed area boundary, will be modified to include a quarter acre, .25 acres, of off-site drainage area in the current analysis. Number seven, the final version of the stormwater report will be revised to remove the incorrect reference to the Del Mar hydrograph. 8A, a jellyfish model, JF6-5, will be shown on the final plan for submission. And nine, the claim that the stormwater management report that the detention basin provides some amount of TSS removal will be removed from the final version of the report. Number 10, the final stormwater management report will be correct in the amount of separation between the SHGW and the basin's bottoms. Comments in that report, number 3, 4, 5, 6, 8B, 11, 12, and 13, did not require any action. David Vanish, Review Letter dated September 28, 2014. Except as noted, paragraphs 1 through 6 are observations and do not require any site plan or changes. In light of the observations made in 6E, specifically, the current proposed fence in the eastern buffer ends before the front yard, and 6FI, i.e. one of the trees in the eastern front yard, is deciduous and therefore may not provide year-round screen. Comment 10 suggests that the Board and the applicant discuss extending the proposed six-foot-high fence, six-foot-high solid wood stockade fence into the front yard. ISBR agreed that if the adjoining property owner raised the issue during public comment, the Board wanted to accommodate the neighbor, then ISBR would extend the fence. The Board also granted ISBR the variance necessary to extend the fence in the eastern front yard. I believe a CT variance should be granted to allow the six-foot-high fence to extend into the front yard because the screening benefits will substantially outweigh any detriment. In fact, I don't believe there will be any detriment because the fence is perpendicular to the street rather than the typical sort of fence that is usually addressed in the ordinance, which is intended to prohibit, namely, a fence parallel to the street and the front yard. In light of the observations in paragraph 6F1, ISBR agreed to reduce one of the deciduous trees mentioned therein with an evergreen tree. In light of the observation made in 6FV, in response to comment 9, ISBR agreed to add knockout roses in front of basin number two in order to screen the northerly limit basin number two from the church street view. In response to 6GII, ISBR agreed to revise note number five on Sheet C-6 to refer to In light of the observation made in 6F, in response to comment 11, ISBR agreed to accept a condition that the Board's landscaping committee could at any time evaluate the site landscaping prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Could evaluate and direct whether or not any planting should be added among the single row of evergreen trees located between 115 and 225 on the grading plan of the site plan from church street to the eastern buffer. David Schly, Letter dated December 11, 2014. ISBR agreed to comply with the following comments stated in the letter. Revised Note 23 on Sheet C3 to state the basin shall be within drainage, not conservation easement. Two, revise the title of the first floor on Sheet A-01 to specify the actual square footage of 4,216 square feet. Three, discuss the proposed use of flush curbing within the parking lot pursuant to Ordinance 21-39.3A.2. All parking areas shall be curved to Township standard specifications, i.e. 6-inch-high curve, unless the applicant demonstrate the elimination of such curbing will not decrease the useful life of the pavement or have a negative effect on drainage or increase maintenance costs. Number four, the land use development ordinance provides for future banked parking. Ordinance 21-22.1.A1A states that the Board may allow construction of a lesser number of parking spaces provided that adequate provision is made for construction of the required spaces in the future. The applicant proposed to satisfy the parking requirement of 107 spaces by constructing 69 spaces and banking 38 spaces for future construction. The plan stated that the banked parking spaces shall be constructed by the applicant within 120 days of a request by the township engineer or upon the applicant's earlier election to do so. In order to monitor the parking demand, parking counts should be submitted by the applicant to the town- by the applicant to the township engineer on a quarterly basis or less frequently if deemed appropriate by the township engineer. Construction of the parking, of the future parking area should be included in the performance guarantee and provided to the applicant to the township as a part of the initial construction. Since I am proposing to change to the number of parking spaces on the site from a hundred and seven to eighty-three, the parking calculations on the plans must be revised and the banked parking requirements may also be revised. Based on eighty-three parking spaces, I believe approximately twenty-three could be banked, so sixty would be constructed at the time the building is constructed and the remaining twenty-three will be subject to the approved banking requirements. Or it may be possible that banking is no longer applicable and all eighty-three parking spaces could be installed at the time the building is constructed. Number five, in the planning schedule in sheet C-six, the applicant should consider specifying the green giant, a variety of the proposed western arborvitae for better deer resistance. Six, after construction of the initial parking lot and after the construction of the future parking lot, the installed landscaping should be subject to the inspection by the board's landscaping lighting committee and the applicant should be required to comply with any reasonable recommendations to improve screening of the parking areas from the adjoining residential properties. The applicant's wetlands consultant should confirm that the plantings proposed within the wetlands transition area are permitted by NJDEP rules unless the plantings are specifically approved in conjunction with the permit issued by the NJDEP to the applicant. The lighting plan specifies that all exterior lighting except security lighting will be turned off by ten-thirty PM during standard time, eleven PM during daylight savings time, and ten, eleven-thirty PM when Ramadan begins in June, July, or August. And also I know it changes to the winter months, so whenever Ramadan occurs, but that's what the agreement's. The plan, so whenever Ramadan, the, the lightings will, lighting will be turned off at eleven-thirty in the time of Ramadan. The plan designates two driveway light poles, three parking lot light poles, and security lighting. Six building lights are to be controlled by timers after construction of the initial parking area and again after construction of the future parking area. The installed lighting, including the extent of the security lighting, should be subject to an in-service inspection by board landscaping lighting committee and the applicant should be required to comply with any reasonable recommendations to reduce lighting intensity. Nine, the wood fence detailed on sheet C-dash-twelve should be revised to specify a maximum height above ground level of six feet. The finished side of the fence shall face the adjoining property and the fence shall remain a natural wood color. Number ten, in response to the comment made at a prior hearing, the applicant indicated that the proposed wood fence would be rooted so that it would not disturb existing trees. Pursuant to twenty-one dash sixteen to C, all fences must be symmetrical in appearance and have posts or columns separated by identical distance and consistent of material conforming to the definite pattern and size. Adjustments to the proper, proposed fence may be necessary in respect to the existing trees and may require variance and not be, from the strict compliance with Bernard Township ordinance twenty-one dash sixteen to C. If the applicant should enter into an agreement with the township granting the township police department the authority, the applicant should enter into an agreement with the township granting the township police department the authority to enforce motor vehicle and traffic regulations throughout the site pursuant to Title Thirty-nine of the New Jersey revised statutes. The regulations should be enforced and would specify and include a prohibition against vehicles parked in any area except designated parking spots as shown on the site plan approved by the planning board. As discussed at the prior hearing, the applicant should not be and would not be obligated to enter into an agreement until such time when the majority of the house of worship within the township's, as, within a time when the majority of the other houses of worship within the township have done so. The applicant should make site, the site available to the Liberty Corner Fire Company in the event they wish to run drills on the site with given notice to the fire company at least thirty days prior to the demolition date of the existing dwelling. On September thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen board meeting, Mr. Raymar indicated that ISBR would agree to this if Liberty Corner Fire Company gives ISBR advance notice on what it proposes to do at the site. The chief indicated Liberty Corner Fire Company would not do anything unless the owner agreed to it. Thirteen, soil erosion and sediment control plan is subject to approval by the Somerset Union Soil Conservation District. Fourteen, the proposed drainage and conservation easement shall be prepared by the township attorney, executed by the applicant, recorded by the Somerset County clerk prior to any issuance of a building permit. Drainage easements must be included, maintenance manuals, which shall be subject to review and approval by the board engineer and township attorney. The applicant must attend pre-construction meetings with the township engineer, township, township engineering department prior to the start of any construction activity and the applicant must also submit digital copies of all plans and documents in formats acceptable to the township engineering department. Fire official Liberty Corner Fire Company review letter dated December nineteenth, two thousand and fourteen. First comment doesn't require any changes. Two and three, IS, comments number two and three, ISBR agreed to revise the site plan to comply with the following comments. Two, hydrant installation as per ordinance section twenty-one dash forty-six A, one B, and G. Both hydrants shall be installed with pressures and flows submitted by the fire official for approval prior to a building permit being issued. Number two, access roads as per ordinance, Bernard Township ordinance twenty-one dash forty-six A, one E. Access roads shall be installed and made serviceable prior to and during construction. Number four, in response to comment number four, ISBR noted that fire safety preparedness is a matter that the fire official addresses with the site owner under the state uniform fire code and is not within the jurisdiction of the board. Nonetheless, ISBR agreed to work with Ms. Lake at the applicable time, which is prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, to make sure that all necessary and appropriate fire safety procedures are in place. Five dash eight, ISBR agreed to comply with the following comments. Five, access around the rear of the parking lot, the fire company requests adequate access around the rear of the parking lot so that the temporary gravel drive aisle can support the weight of the turning radius of the ladder tower truck. Number six, mountable curving, the fire company requests that the inside curving abuts the driveway throughout the entire site be mountable. The fire company requested that the outside curving that abuts the driveway from church street to the first parking spot in the east and to the first parking spot to the west be mountable. Number seven, Knox Box. The fire company requests that Knox Box be located to the newly designate, designated public entrance. Note, this change was already made by the fire service plan dated January twenty-second, two thousand and fifteen. Number eight, additional hydrant, the fire company requests the installation of a second hydrant to the rear of the building to provide a water source for incident, for incidents that may occur in the rear of the site. The specific location of the hydrant is requested in the peninsula adjacent to the first southwest handicap parking spot. Change was made to the fire service plan January twenty-second. Liberty Corner Fire Company review letter dated February fourth, two thousand and fifteen. ISBR agreed to comply with the following comments of one through five of this letter. One, the fire hydrant currently located between the north-facing side of the structure and the retention, tension basin shall be relocated to the east curb line of the west entrance, sixty-five feet from church street curb line. Number two, the fire company connection, FD, fire department connection, FDC, currently located on the northern-facing side of the structure shall be relocated to the west curb line and the west entrance driveway forty-five feet from the church street curb line. Three, the fire department connection shall have a five, five foot, five-inch storts connection and be marked appropriate signage and have designated by a red LED lamp. Number five, FDC, fire department connection shall lead directly into the sprinkler outside the structure and shall not feed back into the fire service main and the FDC shall be installed per code. Other government approvals include the Bernard Township Sewage Authority, approval to increase the capacity for a house of worship, the Somerset County Planning Board's site plan approval, which is conditional upon New Jersey DEP's amendment or revision to the wastewater management plan regarding the site with specific approvals of ingress and egress to church street and the Department Environmental Protection Buffer averaging transition area waiver. Other conditions of, in this approval would be Daniel Lincoln, the applicant's architect, testified on November twenty-eighth, two thousand and twelve at a hearing session that the maximum occupancy of the building was a hundred and forty-two people at any one time. Mr. Lincoln also testified during the November twenty-eighth, two thousand and twelve hearing session that high holy, holy services would not be held on property. As I stated at the beginning of the deliberation, I believe the maximum occupancy of the building should be a hundred and twelve people so that the improvements that are proposed for the property will satisfy the township ordinance's requirements and the essential elements of preliminary site plan approval will meet the health and safety requirements of Bernard's Township. I note that the ISBR initially proposed the prayer hall with the maximum occupancy to a hundred and twelve mats for prayer and the reason ISBR submitted an exhibit showing the additional thirty mats in the multipurpose room was because the board wanted to see how many additional prayer mats could fit, physically fit in the room. The applicant will attempt, will attempt to decrease the level of illumination on the site as close to possible of the average illumination across the site to point-five foot candles, provided it does not require a variance or an exception and safety is met. On Sunday mornings, ISBR will provide vested monitors that will direct parents to drive to the south side of the building in order to drop off their children. ISBR will submit a drop-off pickup plan prepared by a professional engineer with expertise in traffic engineering for review and approval by the board engineer and planning experts who may consult with the traffic engineer expert if they wish. The current site plan includes a drop-off to the rear sign in front of the building and one-way signage and directional arrows in the drive aisles around the western and southern side of the building. ISBR will add additional signage to the front of the building on the northern side indicating that the public entrance is to the rear of the building on the southwestern side. The delivery area will not be located in front of the fire hydrant or in any fire lanes. During the October thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen hearing session, ISBR agreed to conduct two fire drills per year with the congregation. ISBR will consent to the application by the Liberty Corner Fire Company to Somerset County to prohibit parking on church street in front of the Liberty Corner Firehouse. As a result of visits by Mr. Banish, Quinn, and Schley to Mr. Abati's site on January twentieth, two thousand and fifteen, board professionals may rely upon final revised landscape plan, recommend substituting and or reorient, reorienting certain plantings on the western side of the parking lot. On August seventh, two thousand and twelve, Dr. Shodry testified that ISBR would agree to a condition that there be no external speaker on the building and no amplification of the call to prayer. On November twenty-eighth, two thousand and twelve, Mr. Lincoln, ISBR's architect, testified that the two minuettes on the mosque will not provide for any sound or light and would be ornamental only. On November twenty-eighth, two thousand and twelve, Mr. Lincoln also testified ISBR would agree to use no, to, no use of the accessory building for anything than accessory storage. And finally, the preliminary approval shall be subject to the board's standard conditions as set forth in its rules and regulations. So those are my recommendations.
Thank you, Ms. Pedlini. Is there a board member who would like to go next? Ms. Kleiner, thank you.
I want to thank my fellow board members, particularly Chairman Plaza and Board Secretary Fran Florio, Board Attorney John Drill, and Board Professionals for their time and efforts in making this difficult application run so smoothly and professionally. I also want to thank the applicant's attorney, Mr. Raymar, and the objector's attorney, Mr. Simon, in their conduct over many ups and downs that this application had. Also, I want to thank the public for their patience over the thirty-five hearing sessions and late nights. And in particular, I want to thank the public for their thoughtful, detailed presentations during the public comment portion of this application. After many years of being on the planning and zoning boards in this town, I've found this to be the most difficult application I've had to vote on. In addition to creating late nights for everyone in this room, it has made for many hours of outside preparation. Quite frankly, I'm glad I'm not an attorney because I can look at the plans and testimony in a more simple way. After listening to over thirty-five hearing sessions and hours of testimony for more than three years, I have concluded that I cannot grant final or even preliminary site plan approval of the current plans for this application. My decision is based on four reasons. Number one is the unsatisfactory buffer between the residential and non-residential use. Number two is the internal circulation of the site is not adequate. Number three is the non-compliant storm water management plan. Number four is insufficient fire and safety access to the site due to drive aisles being too narrow. The basis for my conclusions are my opinion after hearing from the various experts, professionals, and public, some of whom I found credible and some I did not. Also, I chose to weigh some of the public's observations greater than others based on their personal knowledge of the area and the degree to which they would be impacted by the, by approval of this application. My greatest concern is the lack of buffer proposed on the current plans. With this non-residential use surrounded by residents on all three sides, the fifty-foot buffer as required in twenty-one dash twenty-eight point two B is extremely critical, especially for the adjacent property owners to the east. I cannot specifically approve construction of a detention basin that isn't, that is a hundred percent in the buffer. This buffer is supposed to be a strip of land that separates one land use from another and should include a visual screening as per twenty-one dash twenty-eight point one of a solid year-round barrier. Some screening is proposed on the current plans, but the applicant is also relying on the existing landscaping to provide additional screening. I believe that the existing trees, which could help screen the non-residential use on the east side of the property, would be substantially negatively impacted by the construction of the detention basin, fence, and swale. I don't agree that the impact to the existing eastern tree line as presented by Mr. Khan is accurate. I do not believe Mr. Khan's testimony or opinion as he is a civil engineer with no expertise in landscaping. I am not comfortable leaving this critical decision up to a landscaping committee sometime in the future when adequate screening, screening may not be possible. I do agree that a fifty-foot buffer is proposed for the other two adjacent properties to the south and west. The applicant has revised its plans over the three years and removed some of the things out of the buffer, but chose not to remove everything. The second concern for me is the internal circulation of the site as per twenty-one dash thirty-nine point three point A, point three point B. I believe this is an essential element of the plan and impacts the public health and safety. The internal circulation, parking, and roadways changed a few times during the application. Mr. Khan, while an expert in civil engineering, does not have traffic engineering expertise and I found his testimony to not be credible regarding traffic issues. And he didn't provide any plans for the drop-off or pickup of the children for the Sunday school that could have addressed my concerns. When the public entrance was changed to the southwest corner, that only added to my concerns. Also, I don't think the parking aisles, the parking aisle layout was designed to minimize pedestrian traffic traversing vehicular traffic. Actually, the parking aisle layout, in my opinion, maximizes this situation and I'm not comfortable approving a plan that doesn't convince me of the safety of the pedestrians accessing the facility as the vehicles are maneuvering the site. The third concern I have with granting approval of this application is the incompleteness of AWZ's storm water management design. I believe that the latest storm water design submission contains insufficient information and our engineering expert, Mr. Quinn, stated in his September and our engineering expert, Mr. Quinn, stated in his September 20, 2015 memo that it doesn't work. I think this is an essential element of the plan and a health and safety issue that I'm not comfortable to even grant preliminary approval as per 40:15-D-50. The last area that makes me reluctant to grant even preliminary approval for this application is access to the site for fire and safety. Specifically, I am concerned about the parking lot and fire lane widths not being acceptable. In my opinion, ordinance 21-46A1E in the second sentence incorporates by reference NJPA or NFPA 1141 standards, which provide that the minimum width between 90-degree parking should be 26 feet and the travel lane around the building should be 24 feet. In conclusion, I believe there were choices that the applicant could have made over the last three years to have this application comply with the buffer ordinance, improve the internal circulation, finalize the stormwater design, and improve the fire and safety access to the site. I believe it is not the board's job to tell the applicant how to do this. I believe it's not the board's job to tell the applicant to reduce the maximum number of occupants of the building, thus requiring less parking, less stormwater management, less coverage, and have a compliant buffer area. The constraints on this property were made by the applicant. The applicant has the ability to redesign the project to rectify these self-created problems. This has not been done to date, and that is why I feel I have no choice but to deny this application as currently before us. Again, my decision to deny preliminary approval of the plans is due to the plans containing insufficient information and not convincing me that all of the above ordinance requirements will be met. My decision to deny final approval is based on the fact that the plans are not detailed enough to grant this final approval.
Thank you, Ms. Kleiner. Is there a board member that would like to go next? Mr. Santoro, thank you.
First of all, I would appreciate if the audience not keep their opinion to themselves. As the chairman said upfront, this is for us to deliberate, not for us to hear your applause on their side of the issue. So I think you, to be fair to us, you need to control yourselves. Thank you. I would like to start by echoing the comments of—
More into the microphone, just pull the microphone closer.
I will. Better?
Yep.
I would like to start by echoing the comments of my two colleagues that have spoke, Ms. Pavlini and Ms. Kleiner, in appreciation for the board members, for our professionals, for the public coming and spending a tremendous amount of time. It is important to us. And also to the legal representation of the applicant and the objectors, who I both think have done a stellar job. In reviewing the matter and what's in front of me, I have an opinion similar to Ms. Pavlini. We both have been here from the very first meeting, and I agree also with Ms. Kleiner that I do not think we can approve for final site plan tonight. The plans are insufficient. Changes were made at the board's request and based on the public's comments, but I do not believe that the plans are in the condition that can receive final site plan approval. However, I do agree with Ms. Pavlini in what she stated, that with the changes to the buffer, to remove the buffer substantially out of, to remove the basin substantially out of the buffer, can create a better plan. I do have one correction to what, or maybe clarification to what Ms. Pavlini said, in that the parking spaces, I believe, should be moved, if not exclusively along the eastern property line, but somewhat along there. I think you may be misstated that you said exclusively when you meant not exclusively.
Okay.
The other point I would like to say is, I do agree with Ms. Kleiner on just one of the points in changing the occupancy back to 112. I felt that the board, in the discussion that Ms. Pavlini brought up, pushed the applicant to the higher number. So rather than us pushing them back, I feel that we should go with the initial intent of the applicant and the calculation that Ms. Pavlini went over. I don't feel this is us changing the request. It's going back to the original request and undoing a mistake, as Ms. Pavlini pointed out. The other thing that I would like to add is, if we do agree to approve for preliminary site plan and not final plan, we should include the two exceptions that have been discussed. One is the one that I don't believe there's been any objection to, and that is for the exception for not providing loading spaces. And the second one is the exception for the parking stall dimensions. And again, that would only be for preliminary. I am not in favor of a final site plan approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Santoro. Ms. Pedici, as it would be customary for Ms. Alper to go, second to last, and myself to go last, that leaves you—
Your left.
If that's acceptable to you.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to echo the comments of everybody. This has been a long road through many hearings, and I think we've all conducted ourselves—
Pardon me. Pull that microphone closer.
Okay, we've all, you know, this has been a long road, and I'd like to commend and echo the comments of my fellow board members. The applicant has asked for preliminary and final site plan approval. I'll take up the issue of final site plan approval first. Regarding final site plan approval, the MLUM Municipal Annual Use Law, Section 40:55D-50, states that the planning board shall grant final approval if detailed drawings and specifications of the application for final approval conform to the ordinance standards. The plans submitted do not contain enough detail for final approval, therefore, I will vote to deny final site plan approval. Therefore, my remarks that follow will pertain to the request for preliminary site plan approval. The MLUL Section 40:55D-46 states that the site plan and any engineering documents shall be required in tentative form for discussion purposes for preliminary approval. I have four areas of concern with the submitted plan: buffering, internal circulation, fire safety, and stormwater management, and I will take each in turn. Buffering. Section 21-3.1 of the Bernard's Township Ordinance states a buffer, defines a buffer. It shall mean a strip of land of specified width containing natural woodlands, earth mounds, or other planted screening material, and separating one kind of land use from another, or separating a planned development from any other form of development. Therefore, the purpose of the buffer is to separate and screen. Ordinance 21-28.2 states that buffers are required on all lots zoned other than residential or used for non-residential purposes, where a lot abuts residentially zoned lots. In this case, the non-residential use is between two residential lots. To achieve separation, the buffer must be 50 feet in width and provide adequate screening. The submitted plans place a detention basin in the buffer and require removal of trees that would provide such screening. Based on the full body of testimony provided, I cannot specifically approve the construction of the detention basin in the buffer, because it will defeat the purpose of the buffer. Moreover, the screening referenced in Section 21-28:2 must conform to Section 21-28:1. Section 1 states that screens must be constructed and designed to provide a solid barrier obstructing the view of an area to be screened on a year-round basis. Moreover, all screens must be shown in the landscaping plan, Section 21-43. The buffer fails to comply with these ordinance requirements. Section 1G of the landscaping ordinance states that landscaping shall include items having an effect on appearance, i.e. walls and fences, preservation of natural features, to best adapt the site to the intended use. In this case, the intended use is for separation and screening. The plan includes a fence, but its placement within the drip line of trees will compromise them. In addition, neither the fence nor the detention basin will preserve the natural feature, since trees will be removed and/or compromised, and the appearance will be degraded from the view from the eastern property line. In conclusion, the buffer as presented does not meet the separation, screening, and landscaping ordinance requirements. Item number two, internal circulation. Section 21-39.3A, .3B states that traffic circulation shall be designed to minimize the use of aisles serving parking areas. The circulation plan as submitted maximizes the use, since it is really one continuous aisle. There was no expert testimony about the plan, and Mr. Khan, the applicant's engineer, is not a traffic expert. Moreover, the applicant did not provide a circulation protocol that would allow the board to analyze its effectiveness. Frankly, I do not believe the testimony regarding how the drop-off of children would safely work as part of the traffic circulation plan. I think the proposed drop-off plan is a disaster waiting to happen. The applicant did not satisfy its burden of proving that the proposed drop-off of children and members' guests using handicap spaces can be accomplished safely and without conflicts with vehicles in the drive lanes. In conclusion, the circulation plan as presented does not meet the ordinance requirements, since it maximizes the use of aisles and does not include a protocol for analysis and discussion. Item number three, fire safety. Section 21-46A.1E states that the means of access for fire department apparatus should be constructed in accordance with NJAC 5:21-4. The National Fire Code's Protection Association standards will apply where the 10 criteria listed are not specific. Section E.1, the first criterion, states the means of access for fire department apparatus shall consist of fire lanes, private streets, streets, parking lot lanes, or a combination thereof. This is not specific. So the NFPA standards will apply by reference. Mr. Cody Smith brought this issue to the board's attention, that NFPA Section 1141 will apply. In addition, the applicant relied on this section during testimony and closing statement. NFPA Standard 1141, Section 5.4 governs parking lots. Section 5.4.1 states that the minimum aisle width for firefighting where parking lots or where parking spots are at 90-degree angles is 26 feet. Section 5.4.2 states that aisles adjacent to a building must have a minimum width of 24 feet. Therefore, the 20-foot-wide aisles on the site plan do not meet the NFPA standards that have been incorporated by reference. The last item is stormwater management. The last plan was submitted by the applicant on October 9, 2014. On September 28, 2015, Mr. Quinn responded to the testimony of APGAR associates about that plan. The applicant performed supplemental calculations that Mr. Quinn suggested. He also recommended that recharge be incorporated into design. The board has not received a revised plan that incorporates recharge into drainage system design and includes numerous supplemental calculations that were performed by the applicant as a result of the APGAR testimony and Mr. Quinn's suggestions. Therefore, the plan as submitted does not provide enough information for the board to make an informed decision on its adequacy and compliance with stormwater ordinance requirements. Therefore, for the reasons enumerated, I must vote to deny preliminary site plan approval, because the applicant has not complied with applicable ordinances for buffering, internal circulation, fire safety, and stormwater management. However, if the applicant submits a revised preliminary site plan and stormwater management plan that address the issues I have enumerated, I will favorably on the application. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pedici. Ms. Alper?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I echo the sentiments of my board members who have spoken already. Thank the public for all of your patience and attention to this most important and difficult application. Our board professionals—
One second. Ms. Alper, I'm sorry. If we could just maintain order, please, so that the comments of Ms. Alper could be heard by all in attendance? Thank you.
Assuming they want to be heard. And Mr. Plaza for taking the time and effort and patience to guide us through this long and difficult process. Also, our attorney, John Drill, who has been impeccable in his guidance to us on what is a very difficult application. I have struggled with this application. It's difficult, because I understand that on a preliminary application, that the engineering documents can be submitted in tentative form and for discussion purposes for preliminary I do believe that the plans and documents that have been submitted are tentative. What I've struggled with is how tentative are they, and whether or not we can, in fact, impose conditions that would address the concerns that I have with the plans, because I do believe, as my co-board members have already discussed, that there are issues, and I agree with the same issues that Ms. Pedici and Ms. Kleiner have raised, which is the traffic circulation on the site, the detention basin in the buffer, the stormwater plan, and the— the fire safety. What I struggle with is whether or not we are, as a board, in a position to require conditions for those four areas, which I believe currently do not comply with the ordinance. And it's my opinion that because the requirements would virtually require us to redesign the property, redesign the plans, that I am not comfortable, I cannot in good conscience, agree to preliminary approval based on these plans. I agree with Ms. Pedici that if plans, preliminary plans, were resubmitted, which addressed those four issues, and I don't, I'm not going to repeat them, because they've already been stated by the board members, I would be probably inclined to approve the plans. But I appreciate what Ms. Pavlini has done. I think it's exceptional to think of a proposal that would reduce the occupancy, but personally, I don't feel comfortable with conceptually redesigning this property. I, I'm a board member, and I can't reconfigure where the detention basin would go, if it would go someplace in the rear of the property. I, I don't know what would happen with traffic circulation. I have a real problem with the traffic circulation plan that was submitted. It's my belief that the traffic circulation plan submitted drops the passengers off smack in the middle of a traffic aisle, and I think, for me, it looks very dangerous. And as far as the fire lanes go, if the occupancy was reduced, if the parking spaces were reduced, then perhaps the fire aisles could be expanded, but I think it's so speculative. And when we talk about plans in tentative form for discussion purposes for preliminary approval, I think the plans have to have some, at least a level of detail, so that we, as a board, can be comfortable that we're making a decision that is fair to the public and gives the public a fair view of what's intended here. So I'm sorry to say, I do believe that this is a house of worship. I know there was some discussion raised that it wasn't. I don't believe there's a scintilla of credible evidence that I heard that would suggest this is anything but a house of worship. I believe it's a permitted use, but I just can't, in good conscience, based upon the plans that we have before us, grant preliminary approval because of the four issues that have been raised by my board members. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alper. Before I begin my formal remarks, I too feel compelled to join in the sentiments of appreciation to the applicant during this long process, to the extremely talented applicants council and objectors council, both of whom made incredibly coherent— and objectors' counsel, both of whom made incredibly coherent and relevant arguments on behalf of their clients to give this board a tremendous amount of information to weigh and consider. I thank our professionals. All of the board members have varying degrees of related and unrelated experience that we bring to this job, but it is our legal counsel and our land use professionals who give us the specialized knowledge through their advice and opinions that allows us to discharge our duties and to perform in accordance with our oath in a proper and professional manner. So thank you to all. But in particular, I really must extend my thanks and gratitude to my fellow board members who, over the course of three and a half years, have imposed upon their personal and professional schedules to free up an incredible amount of time, both in the context of meetings and on their own personal time preparing for meetings and reviewing the incredible volume of materials that have been presented throughout the course of this application. It was an amazing amount of dedication, and I thank each of you for your commitment to see it through and to perform at that level. Concerning final site plan approval, it is my finding that the plans and specifications presented by the applicant do not contain the requisite level of detail that would permit the board to grant final site plan approval in accordance with NJSA 40 colon 55D dash 50A. In making that finding, and to avoid burdening the record with additional and repetitive statements that have already been made this evening, I will just mention as examples the stormwater and landscaping plans, which I find are lacking, and even basic details that would be needed for construction. At best, all of the plans and specifications before this board can be characterized as being in tentative form for discussion purposes only. More accurately, to a large extent, the plans and specifications before us are uncoordinated in material respects, inconsistent, and lacking in cohesion. They unquestionably fall far short of what is required for final site plan approval. As such, I cannot find that the applicant has satisfied its burden of proof that it is entitled to final site plan approval, and I cannot vote in favor of granting final site plan approval. The remaining question, therefore, is whether the applicant's plans and specifications in tentative form comply with the ordinance requirements relative to all essential elements of the development plan. For the following reasons, I find that the applicant has failed to prove compliance with several essential elements of the plan as required by the ordinance. One, I find that the applicant has failed to comply with our ordinance 21 dash 28 point two, the buffer ordinance. Specifically, the applicant has not established any basis or justification for this board to specifically approve its proposed location of the easterly detention basin entirely within the required 50-foot buffer on the easterly property line. While generally, I do find that a detention basin is a drainage improvement within section B1 of the buffer ordinance, I find that the specific detention basin proposed by the applicant, relative to its size and location entirely within the buffer, so clearly and completely undermines the policy underlying the buffer ordinance that it cannot be approved. The express and unambiguous purpose of the buffer ordinance is to protect and insulate residential uses from the impact of non-residential uses located on adjoining properties. The most recently revised plans, however, propose a detention basin that is coextensive in length with the entire parking lot, the entire building, and a significant portion of the egress lanes. Further, while it varies slightly across that great span, it consumes between 40% to 60% of the buffer width. At those staggering dimensions, the proposed detention basin cannot be said to fall within the exception contemplated by section B1 of the buffer ordinance. To permit this proposed detention basin in the buffer zone would be to allow the exception to swallow the rule and, in the process, frustrate the purpose of the buffer ordinance. The intended avoidance of such a result is why the governing body subjected the enumerated exceptions to specific board approval. It was contemplated that any of the listed exceptions, if unchecked, could be used to undercut the very purpose of the buffer ordinance. To be clear, it is not just merely the dimensions of the detention basin that make it objectionable. Rather, it is the direct impact of the basin, as so configured, upon the efficacy of the required buffer. The basin directly frustrates the intended screening function of the buffer by creating a large area within the buffer that is no longer capable of supporting a landscape screen. Moreover, the combination of its construction and the construction of the proposed fence, along with the related soil disturbance and grade changes, also threatens the continued viability of the existing trees and vegetation, which again enjoy favor as the preferred method of screening under the buffer ordinance as expressed in section D. For all of those reasons, I cannot approve, vote to approve the location of the proposed detention basin in the eastern buffer. The next issue which concerns me is that relating to screening and compliance with the screening ordinance 21 dash 28 point one. I find that, as a result of the deficiencies with the buffer, I cannot approve the applicant's landscape plan. Specifically, I find that the applicant's landscape plan does not provide sufficient landscaping, in large part due to the applicant's desire and decision to effectuate screening on the eastern property line through a fence rather than a landscape screen, although the latter is expressly preferred in the ordinance. As stated previously, it is noteworthy that the necessity of the fence screen is a direct consequence of the applicant's own decision to consume the majority of the most critical sections of the easterly buffer with a detention basin, thereby undermining and frustrating the very purpose of the buffer in those areas. Additionally, based upon the tentative plans before us, I cannot find that the applicant has complied with the buffer screening along the eastern property line. In that regard, the application lacks sufficient information as to the efficacy of the proposed screening. By way of specific example, the applicant never provided the board with any cross-sections that showed what the landscaping will actually look like along the abutting residential property lines and which would have given this board the necessary perspective to assess whether the applicant complied with the ordinance requirements. Without that additional information and accompanying documents to show what the screen would actually look like, I cannot envision what it will look like, and I have insufficient information to make an informed decision as to whether the applicant has met the requirements necessary for final site plan approval in that regard. If the plans do not permit me to envision the actual screen, I cannot make an informed decision as to its sufficiency and cannot approve the applicant's landscape plan, which, given the adjoining residential uses and requirements, express requirements of the buffer ordinance, I consider to be a key component of site plan approval. As previously stated, the burden is on the applicant to prove it meets the requirement. It is not the obligation for this board to prove that the requirements were not met. The next item of concern relates to screening required under the House of Worship permitted use ordinance. The zoning ordinance, which deems the proposed house of worship a permitted use, expressly imposes a requirement upon the applicant to screen its parking areas from view from all property lines. And that's under ordinance 21 dash 10 point 4 point A, point one, C6. The applicant acknowledged this requirement in its closing argument at slide nine of its PowerPoint presentation. Significantly, however, the applicant never even addressed how it intended to satisfy the screening requirement of the zoning ordinance with respect to the northern property line. The plans, as I understand and interpret them, do not comply with that specific screening requirement. Tellingly, the applicant, despite dedicating PowerPoint slides 10 through 18 of its closing argument to the screening efforts on the other property lines, never even mentioned the northern property line in its closing argument. As such, the applicant failed to meet this very important requirement of the zoning ordinance, thereby precluding a granting of preliminary site plan approval on that basis. The next item of concern is traffic circulation safety. I'm not going to repeat the specific language of section 21 dash 46A point one point E point one concerning the access for fire department apparatus. I concur with the statements made by Member Pedici concerning the fact that within that statute, it was the intention of the, I'm sorry, within that ordinance, it was the intention of the governing body to incorporate by reference the National Fire Protection Association, or NFPA, in the body of that ordinance. Where any of the enumerated items are not specific, as there is no such entity as the National Fire Codes Protection Association that is expressly referenced in the ordinance, and it is the NFPA that promulgates the fire protection standards mentioned by the ordinance. In essence, I think that was a drafting error in the ordinance, which is easy to correct through the clear meaning of what was intended. I also find that section E1, which is the relevant section, is not specific and therefore triggers application of the NFPA standard to the means of access for fire department apparatus. Similar to Member Pedici, I agree with resident Cody Smith that NFPA 1141 applies, in this instance, relative to the fire department apparatus access. In support of that finding, it is significant to me that the applicant never argued that an alternative NFPA standard apply in lieu of NFPA 1141. Moreover, it is equally critical to me that the applicant expressly relied upon NFPA 1141 in its closing argument to establish why it was not required to maintain collapse zones at the project. And I'm referencing PowerPoint slides 69 and 70 of the applicant's closing argument. The applicant's reliance on and incorporation of NFPA 1141 by express reference in that regard further ratifies the application of that standard to other aspects of the application. I join in the observations of Ms. Pedici that this application fails to comply with NFPA 1141 in two critical respects, and that is, as previously stated, it fails to comply with section 5 point 4 point one, which requires the 26-foot wide aisles in the area of 90-degree parking stalls, which is deficient on the proposed plans in the easterly and westerly sides of the parking lot, as well as the rear of the building. And it also fails to comply with section 5 point 4 point two, which requires that parking lot aisles adjacent to the building provide a travel lane with a minimum 24 feet clear width. The one-way drive aisle adjacent to the westerly side of the building, which leads to the parking lot in the rear, is only 20 feet at certain points. As such, the application does not comply with NFPA 1141, is incorporated by reference in ordinance 21 dash 46A point one point E point one. Specifically, I find that the applicant's failure to comply with this ordinance, which directly relates to an issue of traffic circulation for fire department apparatus, an essential element of the site plan involving a matter vital to public health, requires the board to deny preliminary site plan approval. And in making that determination, I rely upon the holding in Deanna versus Washington Township Planning Board, 256 NJ Super 78, APDIV certification denied at 130 NJ 18 1992. To avoid repetition, I also adopt the comments and deliberations of Members Pedici and Alper concerning the deficiencies relative to traffic circulation issues involving the drop-off area for children. And I also adopt the statements of Members Kleiner and Pedici concerning the deficiencies in the stormwater management, and would vote to deny preliminary site plan approval for those same reasons on those two issues. While not relevant in light of my previously stated findings, for the sake of completeness and subject to all of my prior findings, I do find a basis to support the applicant's request for exceptions relating to the dimensions of certain limited parking stalls and to allow the applicant not to provide a loading and unloading area. Finally, I find the issue of a C variance relative to extending the six-foot fence into the front yard to be moot in light of the other findings. In conclusion, and for all of the foregoing reasons, I cannot vote in favor of granting either preliminary or final site plan approval, and I intend to vote to deny the application. Okay, at this time, I'm going to request that the board attorney, now that deliberative comments have been made by all members, to explain to us what the next step in the process is. Mr. Drill?
Okay, I think, just to make everything crystal clear, there should be separate motions on all the relief that any of the board members mentioned in their deliberation. So I think it's easier to start with the easiest one, where I heard it was unanimous. So I'm going to ask someone to make a motion to deny final site plan approval. Just start on the easy ones, and then we'll work our way up the chart.
Mr. Chair, I move to deny final site plan approval.
Thank you, Ms. Alper. Thank you, Ms. Pedici. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, Ms. Florio, roll call, please.
Okay, this is to deny final site plan approval. Ms. Alper?
Yes.
Ms. Kleiner?
Yes.
Ms. Pavlini?
Yes.
Ms. Pedici?
Yes.
Mr. Santoro?
Yes.
Mr. Plaza?
Yeah. Excuse me, yes.
Usually, I always suggest that the board go through variants and exceptions first, but in this case, I don't think we should. I think we should go to the preliminary site plan approval first. And just to make things easier on the vote, just in case anyone switches a vote or anything like that, I'd rather not have to deal with a tie situation, where if we do, under the MLUL, in the case of a tie, it's a denial. So I'm going to ask someone who deliberated in favor of preliminary site plan approval to make a motion to grant it and then take the vote. A yes would be to grant it, and a no would be to deny it.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to grant preliminary site plan approval with the conditions I specified of the relocation of the detention basin of the aisles width to 24 and 26 feet where required, as well as a reduction of the parking space and...
And all of the conditions referenced in your deliberative comments?
Reference in my deliberation from the...
And I'm going to add, if, right, if preliminary and final site plan approval are granted, the variances and exceptions would have to be granted. So at this point, I'm going to ask Mary to include that in her motion, but I'm going to then come back to those and have separate votes on those, just to get a clear record of who would have been in favor or not in favor. But in order to grant preliminary site plan approval in accordance with Mary's motion, in my opinion, those variances would have to be granted. And that's a C2 variance to extend the six-foot high fence into the front yard. Now, if Mary believes on the motion that the buffer should be pulled out and the fence shouldn't be there, then I think for these purposes, let's just, for argument's sake, pull the fence variance out.
Okay.
There's a C2 variance to adjust the fence around the trees. Again, if it was part of your motion, and I heard that Randy, I believe, agrees with that...
Yes, that's correct.
Then you would pull that one out. So my suggestion is, for purposes of the preliminary and final site plan motion, because it's subject to conditions where presumably that fence wouldn't be needed, throw in the exceptions for the parking stall dimension...
And the loading...
And the loading space. So it would be to amend your motion to grant preliminary site plan approval with the two exceptions only.
With two exceptions only, okay, I make that amendment. And can I just make a correction, because I don't know what I spoke when I spoke before? If I did state, I want, my vision was that those 24 parking spaces exclusively along the eastern property line be removed.
Okay, deliberations, the motion's unlikely to pass. So the people that are voting no, vote no because you don't want to grant preliminary site plan approval. The two people voting yes, you're going to have to believe those exceptions can be granted. We're going to come back to make a record and get the actual vote on the exceptions. But I just want to make it clear, just in case there's a, you know, dissatisfied party that appeals, I want to make the record crystal clear on it.
Okay, so we have the motion...
So the exception for the parking stall dimension and not providing a loading space.
So we now have that motion by Ms. Pavlini, as amended and clarified. Did we get a second from Mr. Santoro yet?
No, I am seconding you now.
Okay, now you second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Ms. Florio, roll call on that. Seeing none, Ms. Florio, roll call on that, please. And just clarify, it's a yes...
A yes is a yes for preliminary site plan approval. A no is a denial of preliminary site plan approval.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Alper?
No.
Ms. Kleiner?
No.
Ms. Pavlini?
Yes.
Ms. Padice?
No.
Mr. Santoro?
Yes.
Mr. Plaza?
No.
Okay. So, that motion fails, so preliminary site plan approval is denied. Now, just for the record, let's do the easy ones first. Again, I didn't hear from everybody, but at least I heard from one no vote on the preliminary, which was Chairman Plaza, that he would have granted the exceptions. So, I'm going to ask someone, for purposes of the record and getting the actual vote on the exceptions, would you make a motion to grant those two exceptions?
So moved.
Someone want a second?
I need a, a no. Anyone?
Mary seconded.
Randy seconded.
I think Mary got in first.
Okay. All right. So, seconded by Mary. Any discussion on that motion? This is now just approval of the exceptions in isolation.
Just so you know, technically, the exceptions are moot because the preliminary site plan was denied. You don't, it's not required to do this. My advice is to do this, for purposes of the record, let's have a motion made on the exceptions and have a formal vote on it, just in case anyone's reviewing this, they can see exactly what the vote would have been.
Okay. So, the motion is made by me, seconded by Ms. Pavlini. Fran, roll call, please.
Ms. Alper?
Mr. Chair, would you let us know what the two exceptions are again, please?
It's the, the parking stall dimensions and the absence of a loading, a loading zone.
Ms. Kleiner?
Yes.
Ms. Pavlini?
Yes.
Ms. Padice?
Yes.
Mr. Santoro?
Yes.
Mr. Plaza?
Yes.
Okay. And finally, again, technically, the two C2 variances are moot because preliminary site plan was denied. But just for the record, is someone, the answer might be no, but is someone willing to make a motion to grant the C2 variance to allow an extension of the six-foot-high fence into the front yard, and a C2 variance to allow the fence not to be on a straight line, but to, the use of the word wormage right around the trees is not a good word, but I can't think of a, a better word for now. And if no one makes a motion, that will be denied, or if the motion is made and not seconded, it will be denied.
Weave.
Weave.
Thank you, Mr. Banish.
So, can someone, is someone willing to make a motion to grant those two C variances, or not?
Or in isolation, if, if it makes a difference to anyone?
Right. But you'd have to, if you're going to vote yes on those, that means that you want the fence to be there and you want the fence to scream. If you don't want the fence to scream, then say no, no one's going to make a motion to grant it, and then someone make a motion to deny the C2 variances, just for the record. Anyone willing to make a motion to grant those C2 fence variances?
Well, and how, the fence, would it be how far into the front yard? Or, you know, are you talking about a certain length, or you're just...
It's whatever, I, I don't want to get any more testimony in, but it was in Dave Banish's memo, and I think Mary had that as one of her conditions.
Mr. Santoro, were you indicating you would make a motion?
I will make that motion. For the, the two C2 variances for the fence, as you had mentioned in your comments, Mr. Chairman, the, the front yard is, is de minimis, could be because it is perpendicular to the street. And the other, I believe, is, I'm in favor of because it helps protect the trees.
Okay. The de minimis impact was, the comment was made by Ms. Pavlini, not by me.
You did make a comment on the, the...
I said it was moot, but I didn't say, I didn't characterize it as de minimis.
I didn't want to put the wrong words in your mouth, sorry.
Okay. So, thank you for the motion, Mr. Santoro. Is there a second?
Doesn't look like there's a second. So, in that case, can someone make a motion to deny those C2 variances for the fence?
I move that the C2 variances for the fence be denied.
Thank you, Ms. Alper. Is there a second on that motion? I, I will second that motion.
Okay. To be clear, a yes vote is to deny the C2 variances for the fence, and no vote is to grant them. A yes vote is to deny the C2 variances for the fences.
Thank you, Mr. Drill. Any discussion on the motion before the vote? Okay. Seeing no, one indicating a desire. Ms. Florio, roll call, please.
Ms. Alper?
Yes.
Ms. Kleiner?
Yes.
Ms. Pavlini?
No.
Ms. Padice?
Yes.
Mr. Santoro?
No.
Mr. Plaza?
Yes.
Okay. The C2 variances, even though they're moot, for record purposes, they're denied, and that is the end of the application. I just have to draft a memorializing resolution to be adopted sometime in January.
But that concludes this matter this evening, where the board does have other matters to attend to. So, if you could exit as quietly as possible, if you intend on leaving at this time. Comments from members? Seeing none, comments from staff or professionals?
I can't hear you.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Fran has something out of next meeting.
Oh, okay.
She wanted to make the announcement about next meeting.
All right. So...
Will you adjourn?
Yeah, Fran, you're up, Fran. Shout it out.
Don't forget, we've got food at the 22nd.
Actually, maybe we could talk offline on that, but... All right. Next meeting is the December 22nd, everyone. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Please.
Mr. Santoro, seconded by Ms. Alper. All in favor? To adjourn, all in favor? Aye, all opposed. Seeing none, we're adjourned.